September 13, 2023, East Whiteland Township Board of Supervisors meeting. And if we can stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance? As a customary, I just would like to introduce our attendees here at the table. To my immediate left is Steve Brandt, our Township Manager, Bernadette Kearney, our Solicitor. On my right is Vice Chairman Rich Orlo, and to his right is Supervisor Peter Fixler. I'd like to start off with a little ad lib here. I think on behalf of our residents and the board, Peter, Rich, and I would like to thank all the law enforcement personnel that participated in the extensive 14-day search and capture this morning of escaped convicted murder. We thank you for your efforts, and I know some of our officers were somewhat involved, and thank you, Chris, for allowing them to attend on it. I'm glad it came to a good outcome with no injuries. Moving on to the board briefings, our executive sessions were held today on September 13th at 4:30, in which we discussed personnel legal and real estate issues. Next on the agenda, Catherine, I'll let you talk about the grant applications.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One update for this month is the township was recently awarded a PennDOT multimodal transportation grant for select Route 30 improvements, specifically at the intersection of Route 352 and Route 30, in the amount of $1.2 million. So this is added to the total of $3 million previously awarded through a different grant program to work on making those improvements at 352 and Route 30.
Great, thank you. Catherine, one thing I want to mention. Where are we? I've seen a few comments this past week or so regarding the 352 overpass, and I think we're embarking on trying to find a grant to figure out payments for the solution to identify the people that the overpasses is low.
Yeah, we recently, staff recently had a meeting with PennDOT representatives to discuss potential solutions to alert travelers in that area of the low clearance. And PennDOT made some preliminary recommendations in that staff meeting that the Township Traffic Engineer is going to evaluate to bring back for. It may be a low-cost solution ultimately, but if it ends up being something with some additional design work, we would certainly pursue grant funding for that.
Okay, good. And then I do not see John Neill here today, but I'd like to get out to him is that I'm also hearing that there is another, it's a state road, so we don't control the paving of it, but I understand that there is another large pothole underneath the overpass. So I wouldn't mind getting information to him to see if he could maybe contact PennDOT and see if they can get that looked at. Moving on, Steve, if you can give us a bit of an overview here on the Bishop Tube update.
Thank you, Scott. As many folks know, last night, the Pennsylvania DEP held a public meeting at the General Wayne Elementary School, at which they presented an outline of their plan for remediation of the soil on the Bishop Tube site as well as the groundwater. I'm sure they'll put their presentation on the website that they host, and it was well-attended by both residents and by township staff and officials. And while it was informative, I would say, as I mentioned earlier, it really was just an outline. There's a lot of work that is yet to come. There'll be a lot of engineering design. And then they made it very clear they would then go into the remediation of the soils. After that, they would go into groundwater remediation. And after that, that's when there would be institutional and what they call institutional and engineering controls put into place. So more to come on that. As I mentioned last night at the meeting, the township and DEP are making efforts to communicate more frequently and in more detail. And we've started to have phone calls and weekly teams meetings. And basically, we intend to communicate very closely throughout the process that the township's involved in, which is considering the subdivision land development plan of Constitution Drive Partners, and while the DEP continues through their process of engineering and then ultimately remediation of the site. I also want to mention that we have pledged that there will be a township public meeting similar to the one that the DEP held last evening. We just, we don't have a meeting date for that yet. At one point, we had talked about trying to have it pretty close to theirs, but that's not going to happen. So again, more to come on that. But we haven't forgotten, and we do intend to have that meeting. That's it on the update. The other thing that I wanted to discuss here, or the other item that I wanted to discuss here was there is the matter of the subdivision land development plan and the associated time clock. The developer has offered a time extension. The current clock would expire on October 24, 2023, and the developer's offered essentially a two-month extension where the clock would be extended till December 26, 2023. So that's a matter for the board's consideration, and I look down the table for your comments and thoughts.
Sure. I will add, Steve, to everyone, is that everyone at this table plus Catherine was at the DEP meeting last night as well. One observation I would like to add is that, based upon last night's presentation by the DEP, that beyond the existing concerns that are addressed in the 18 conditions or so in our current preliminary land development ordinance, we heard something new that, to me and a lot of other people, feel is impactful. And that being the protective measure of a potential bio-retention area. And the actual size could greatly impact the design area. And as I asked DEP Representative Dustin Armstrong last night as far as when they might have an idea of when that bio-retention area would be outlined or the size, he couldn't come up with a specific time, but it seemed as though it was going to be sometime in 2024. So I think that's, again, something I would like to point out. If there's any other thoughts, Rich, that you have being there, or Peter?
I know, it was helpful. Not as helpful or specific as far as a timeline that many may have hoped, including us up here, on the steps, the sequencing, just the three next steps, the remedial design investigation, the preliminary design of 30% plans, and then the final 90% design. That has to happen before anything happens. And that is anybody's guess. The probably range of time just for these steps to occur was probably a year, maybe a year and a half. So I know everybody wants to have answers promptly, but this unfortunately is going to take a bit more time. And the hope is that the more time that it's taken, that it's, it takes the time to get it done once and right. The hope is, from up here, the hope is that whatever remediation is decided on and is undertaken works and works the first time. I would hate to want to think that there will be a need for a Plan B if it doesn't, but that probably should be considered upfront.
I don't really have anything to add to what Rich said. The meeting was informative, but it still left a lot of questions unanswered in terms of timelines and when and if things, when things are going to happen.
Any public comments? Just need your name and address for the record. Mic is off.
Okay, now, because, hi, Joan Smallwood, 402 Worthington Road, Chester Springs. But as everybody at the table knows, for 26 years, I was at 51 Village Way. First of all, thank you very much for coming last night. It was really nice to see that show of support, and so we really appreciated that. And secondly, just want to say, you know, in light of the fact that you all just, you know, commented on the fact that the plan has no meat on its bones, as we discussed last night, that should be enough reason to be able to vote no for the final land development plan, which I guess I just heard you say the deadline's now extended into December. So that gives us time for the meeting for the township, right, for the township residents. And, you know, we do hope that you'll stand firm and not be afraid of a lawsuit. And, you know, it just doesn't make any sense to approve a plan when there's, nothing is known. So, thanks so much.
So we have another question?
Online.
Yes, Barb, please go ahead.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, it's Barb Arnold, 31 Font Stop Road. I'd like to just reiterate what Joan said. First of all, thank everybody for being there last night. We residents do really appreciate that. I wanted to ask, I know this will come up later, but this deadline, the December 26 deadline that they're talking about, the zoning board would, do they have to approve the plan first before it would come to you guys? Is that how it works?
No, they do not.
Okay, so it would be coming to you, okay. So December 26, your meeting would be way before then, your last meeting in December. So you would have to be looking at it at your meeting in December, whatever, 8 or 6 or whatever that Wednesday is.
Correct.
Correct? Okay, all right, great. I just kind of wanted to establish that because I don't want people thinking we have till December 26, when really we don't. Because if there is no decision made, then that would be an automatic approval.
And actually, can I, I think, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We're not, okay, got it. And when I said, was shaking my head, no, as to zoning hearing board application, we're reviewing the plans. There may be something on there that one of the consultants may say you need zoning relief for, but as of now, we're not aware of anything right now. But their consultants are reviewing the plan.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so at this point in time, Rich, would you like to make a motion for the extension?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the extension of the time within which the board must act on the Bishop Tube plan until December 26, 2023.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes. Moving on to 2D, a couple milestones that occurred last week that we're real happy to kind of share with you. And Donna, if you can get that queued up. But before you start it, if I can pontificate here for a moment. The first is that we had a ribbon cutting on Thursday at Bacton Hill Park, and we had a lot of attendees. A lot of people had helped design and construct this park over a three-year period. Park and Rec folks were present. The board was present, Steve was there. And we ended up having Senator Katie Muth present, Representative Christine Howard. We had Chester County Commissioners, DCNR representatives, who had participated in grant funding for the park. Chester County Parks and Rec and Preservation representatives were there. We had our township engineer, Al, who's in the front row, he was there as well. So we had a good turnout. Tom O'Neil, the park, new park chairman, was there. And it was a good event. And then on Saturday was the official opening of the park. So the Bacton Hill Park is fully functional for everyone to use. We hope you get out there and get to use it at this point in time. The second milestone occurred also on Saturday afternoon, in which, after some period of time, we finally have a historic, I want to get to this correctly. The Ebenezer African Methodist Episcopal Church Historic Marker was unveiled off of Bacton Hill Road. We had a number of dignitaries from the AME Church. Representative Howard was there again, and it was a good opening for this project. And the idea is to try to minimize any further damage to the existing structure of the church and to reclaim as much of the cemetery and fix the headstones as much as possible. So that was a really good event as well. So I just wanted to bring those to everyone's attention. Next on the agenda is, oh, it'd be nice if we played the video. Thank you.
Bacton Hill Park is something that we've waited, excited. This is an all-abilities park. It means so much for this community to have a couple things, a connection to the Chester Valley Trail, have this wonderful all-abilities park behind me that has everything from space for our youngest residents all the way up to exercise equipment for some of our older, more mature residents. It's been a labor that's taken a lot of people and a lot of coordination. And as Parks and Rec, we are so excited to be able to use this in our portfolio of parks and to be able to include this in our programming for the future. I encourage everybody here in the township to come out to the park here on Bacton Hill. It's a beautiful place. We have a wonderful pavilion, a great place to have lunch or dinner. Wonderful park here for our children to play on. If you're someone interested in fitness, come through the Chester Valley Trail, come bike up here. You have a wonderful area to work out and exercise, and I really encourage everyone to come take a look.
We are so excited to see this park open. As a school board member, we work a lot with the township to do a lot of projects. I think it speaks volumes to the collaboration and the volunteers that have made this project come to life. We love that we see our school district kids and community members as part of this park. And I think what it's able to do, it's able to bring the community together in another space, in a fresh space, which is so nice. We have a wonderful community here in the Great Valley area. This park is a reflection of that. So we hope to see everybody out here with their kids and their families to exercise, to hang out, to enjoy this weather. It's going to be a wonderful fall going into the holiday season. We hope to see it here.
The park sits right in the general area of what was the White Horse Inn. This was a very critical place in the history of the township. It's a place where the Battle of the Clouds, which was Washington versus the British Army, were engaged here. And we have many old buildings that date back to the Revolution in this area. So it's a very historic corner of the township that this is in. As the township gets more and more built out, the open spaces and places for people to do things are more and more important. So we need parks and we need areas for kids to play, for people to be able to hike. So this park is really a nice addition for us to add to that as the township builds up. For a park to be successful, you really need to have people participating, people using, people active. So I strongly encourage everybody to come out, take a look, and enjoy the park.
I'd like to take a second to thank the creator of that. Ryan in the back, if you'd like to stand up. That was a nice, Ryan Newman, good job on that. Next, I want to announce that we are having, between October 3 and October 6, bulk trash pickup. And there is a specific drop-off date of October 7 at the Public Works Garage, anytime between 7:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. as well. I think we'll probably have more details on the website with maybe specific items that are excluded. Our expert, John, is not, John Neill is not here tonight, so I'm going to refer to the website. I will also ad lib and add one more thing is that, I don't know if you folks realize this, but in the township, we have 4,000 sewer grates that we are responsible for. And there's a substantial amount more that are on state roads or on business properties. We're getting in that time of the year where the leaves are falling, and it could be real helpful for residents to clean out the grates if they can to prevent any type of flooding that might occur going forward. It would be real help. Again, we have 4,000 of those. Catherine, trick or treat?
So briefly, the trunk-or-tree event will be held here in the township parking lot. More details to come. The scheduled date is October 28. It's a Saturday from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., and a rain date of Sunday, October 29 at 4:00 p.m. And more details to come, and it'll be posted on the township website. But there'll be some great appearances by the police and our fire department and community members.
Thank you. Moving on to board motions. I did. I did. You were snoozing. You really were. Moving on into the board motions, Steve, regarding the tax exoneration.
Yeah, this, excuse me, this is the Atwater HOA requesting of us and of the county that we forgive them for 2021 real estate taxes for a small parcel of open space. The amount of the real estate taxes that we would be exonerating or otherwise forgiving is $336.13. So if the board's so inclined, please, please make a motion approving that exoneration, and then we can notify the county that this is taken care of.
Sure. Peter, you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the exoneration of the 2021 taxes in the amount of $336.13 for Atwater's HOA open space.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And in case anyone is following along, the ARPA grants, that topic has been tabled till next month. We forgot to tell you that, Donna. That's okay. Sure. Just to give you an update, we did have a discussion amongst ourselves, and we think we've got some candidates that are going to be awarded. And we'll be reaching out to them in the next 30 days and then officially have the ceremony and talk about it in details with specific numbers next month. This is the ARPA mini-grant award that the township is administering, Catherine is administering. Steve, next one?
This is a board resolution recognizing September 18 through the 22, 2023, as Transportation Demand Management Week. Many of you are probably wondering what transportation demand management is. The resolution starts off by saying, whereas "transportation demand management" means the use of strategies to inform and encourage travelers to maximize the efficiency of a transportation system leading to improved mobility, reduce congestion, and lower vehicle emissions. And it goes on to say, "TDM programs and policies aim to provide all people with a mix of reliable and affordable transportation options." There's a local agency, TMAC, known as TMAC, that a gentleman named Tim Phelps, some of you may know. Tim is a township resident, and he's a member, a very active member of our Park and Rec Board. Puts in a lot of time regarding Park and Rec, and especially with our summer concert series. And Tim is the Executive Director of TMAC, which is the Transportation Management Agency of Chester County. Tim asked that we make this announcement and adopt this resolution which proclaims that next week is TDM Week here in East Whiteland Township.
Rich, would you like to make a motion for the resolution?
Motion to approve Resolution 23, 2023, recognizing September 18 to 22, 2023, as Transportation Demand Management Week.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes. Moving on to our public hearing, I will turn it over to Bernadette Kearney.
Just let me know when you're ready. Okay. Good evening. We're going to come out of the public meeting and go into a public hearing. And this is a public hearing. I'm going to read the notice for an ordinance of East Whiteland Township. Chester County, Pennsylvania, amending the East Whiteland Township Code of Ordnances, Chapter 200, entitled Zoning, Section 200-89.1, entitled Signs, and the ROC- entitled Zoning, Section 200-89.1, entitled signs in the ROC/R, regionally oriented commercial hyphen residential district developments, to amend the maximum number of site identification signs and entrance pylon signs that are permitted in the ROC/R zoning district. So it amended two sections, I'm gonna, of the ordinance, I'm gonna mark a series of exhibits. B1 will be the August 14th, 2023 email to the Chester County Planning Commission. B2, the August 10th, 2023 email to the East Whiteland Township Planning Commission. B3, the August 15th, 2023 email slash letter to the Daily Local News with the legal notice and proposed ordinance. B4, the August 15th, 2023 email and letter to the Law Library with a copy of the attested proposed ordinance. B5, the August 24th, 2023 Chester County Planning Commission Review Letter. B6, the proof of publication. B7, the legal notice. And B8, the ordinance. We had originally planned to have this last month, but it was pointed out to us there was a couple typos, so we are proposing it this month. And again, it just changes the, allows a maximum of two identification signs and a maximum of three entrance pylon signs. So those two items changed in the ordinance. I don't know if Zach, if you, if it comes back, if you have anything else to add? If there's any public questions or comments? Any from the board?
I have none either.
Talked it through?
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to adopt that ordinance.
Peter, would you like to make an ordinance?
Yes, I would. I would like to make a motion to adopt the zoning text amendment related to sign in ROC/R regionally oriented commercial residential district developments, Section 200-89.1.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on, Chris Jaeger has some competition from Greg Lewis pertaining to selling of vehicles.
Friendly competition. We had a 2015 Dodge Ram on municipal bid and looking for approval to go to the highest bidder for $27,600.
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the sale of the 2015 Dodge Ram for the ticket price of $27,600.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And is official. Yeah, I will. Steve and Zach, or anyone else that can comment, or Al, maybe even just pertaining to the next area of motion to advertise, and this is pertaining to the, just the advertisement for the Ravine Road Slope Stabilization Project, and if you can give us a little overview on it?
Yes. The issue that occurs along Ravine Road is that it's a butt to stream, and there's a lot of erosion that's undermining the roadway. So township asked us to design a basically embankment stabilization with riprap and that. And we've done, we've designed that, it's ready to go out to bid, and we're just asking permission or approval to advertise a bid later this week.
Sure. Rich?
Yeah, motion to approve to advertise for the Ravine Road Slope Stabilization Project.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay to advertise. Moving on, 6B is pertaining to advertisement for the 23, 24 diesel and oil fuel bid. This is a second time in which we're gonna be going out and advertising. The first time, we received no bids. But John is pretty confident that there will be bids the second time, so if we can just have a motion to advertise?
I'll make a motion to advertise for the 2023, 2024 diesel and oil fuel bid.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Father Zach Brown? Anyway. Zach Warner is a new dad, so we give him a hard time here. But if you'd like to take us through some planning and development, because I know you've missed this razzing for a while.
Just a little bit. Just a little bit. First item here, and thank you, I appreciate that, under--
By the way, your daughter is very cute, beautiful child.
She's special. Did you expect anything less?
Your wife must be absolutely beautiful.
She absolutely is. Hopefully she's watching this, though I doubt it. All right. First item under planning and development is considering execution of the conditional use application, or decision, rather, for the Chester County Intermediate Unit at 40 Moore's Road. This was approved essentially at the August meeting. This is really just a formalization of the written decision with the conditions and all of that. Once this condition, this decision is executed, it'll be provided, a copy will be provided to all the, those who requested party status during the hearing process. So we'll have that for you to sign at the end of the meeting.
I think we had a robust discussion about this here some time ago. We ended up putting on some reasonable conditions to protect our residents and the area. And I think, I think probably we don't need to anymore, add anymore to it. Any questions on this from the audience or public? Okay.
I don't see any additional questions, for me at least.
Okay. Now let's make a motion?
Motion to authorize the execution of the conditional use decision for CU022, 2023, for Chester County Intermediate Unit at 40 Moore's Road.
No second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Okay. Let's, let's think barbecue on the next one.
Next item is a request for a waiver of land development from Farm Boy Barbecue. Farm Boy is sort of an existing known entity in the township. They've had sort of a pop-up location in the past. They're looking to open a brick and mortar location in Atwater, sort of where Naf Naf Grill used to be located. They're essentially looking to create a, an outdoor smoker house that'll house two large meat smokers in an area that's currently sort of a grassed area and two parking spaces. So they'll be kind of modifying the curb line and putting an accessory building outside of the existing restaurant building. So technically, that triggers land development. It's a very simple project. Staff and the township engineer generally support the waiver. However, there are a couple of review letters, some comments from Arrow that the applicant's currently working through, a couple of comments from McMahon regarding signage, stop bars, things like that. Site distance is not an issue in that drive aisle, if you've ever been there. So I will say there's a couple of conditions we've outlined in the resolution that we drafted, but we wanted to bring it to the board for consideration.
I'd just like to ask a general question. The Farm Boy is leasing the property, and they're gonna build a structure on that. Is the leaser obviously okay with that? And what happens to that structure after the Farm Boy moves on?
Sure. I'm not familiar with the lease terms, but I imagine it would probably be removed as a part of their lease. They are leasing the building. We do have a letter of consent from the property owner, and they would be also required to sign the approval resolution if granted. So they will be abundantly aware of what's going on there, of course. They did do some interior renovations, which are complete at this point, so it's really just a matter of, so they're pretty much clear to open. This would just be an additional feature that they're adding.
Such a specific structure--
Yes.
--that if Naf Naf Grill were to come back in, I don't think they would need--
Probably not.
--a smokehouse, so to say. So, okay.
Just to follow up on something Zach said, one of the conditions is an as-built plan. If the township consultants want it to be recorded, we would need the owner to sign that in order to get it recorded, the Chester County Recorder of Deeds, which is another reason we have the consent and joiner on the resolution.
He's a good user. That space has been empty for at least a year, maybe two now, so it's probably good to fill it up.
And for those who are not familiar, I'll give him a little PR. This is the Farm Boy stand that used to be in the corner of 29 and 30 at the Sunoco Station. So he'll be moving into a full brick and mortar structure at this point in time. So. Peter, would you like to make a motion?
Do I need to make a motion citing the conditions?
No, I was gonna say, I don't think it's necessary. We've got the resolution drafted, it's in the packet. Basically, it just says comply with the letters, get permits, record an as-bill, pay fees. That's essentially what--
Just wanna make sure everything's included.
Appreciate that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the waiver of land development for Farm Boy Barbecue Smoker, WLD-08-2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And passes. We got barbecue.
Is there anybody here from Farm Boy? When are you guys opening up?
You better get out there, Paul, and start smoking, because you just got your approval. You know what? Okay. No, we just, we just approved everything, so you're good, you're good to go.
Your timing is perfect.
That's a short visit. See ya. Get cooking. Moving on. Zach?
Next item is two items that are extensions of time. The first is for the master plan related to the Great Valley Corporate Center redevelopment by Philadelphia Suburban Development Corporation. They are offering extension through November 30th. No, I'm sorry, November 8th, this should say. That's my fault. That's the next, that's the November board meeting date for the master plan, which is essentially, I'll speak to this a little bit later on the agenda, but basically, it's the phasing plan, the plan that shows all the building footprints, outlines all the traffic improvements, and like the really essential stuff that tees up the subsequent land development plans for each individual phase. So there, this is really just that first step of approvals. So again, this is just, it's an extension until November 8th, 2023.
Zach, will we, is there a period of time? Well, we did ask the folks to come in, right, and give a little further update in terms of changes that occurred?
Yeah.
And you're gonna give a little overview?
Correct. Yeah, we offered to give them some time on the agenda this evening. I'm gonna give sort of a brief overview on their behalf tonight.
Okay.
But this, yeah, this is related to that, that last item under the planning part of the agenda.
Yeah. So just give you guys a heads up on that. So, Rich, would you like to make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the extension of time to render a decision on the master plan for Great Valley Corporate Center redevelopment until November 30, or November 8th--
November 8th.
--2023.
And a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Extension granted.
The next item was actually handled sort of at the beginning of the meeting, that that's the extension for Bishop 2, from the current date to December 26, 2023. So that's already been approved. The next item is consideration for a request of waiver from the Stormwater Management Ordinance for a project at 65 Great Valley Parkway. This is building M6 for Jansen. They're undergoing a number of projects throughout the corporate center for drainage improvements, generator projects, a number of different improvements to existing buildings that they have. This is essentially a waiver to relieve them from some of the requirements from infiltration, groundwater recharge, and one for pipe diameter for a drainage project that they're undertaking. I believe there's someone here representing Jansen. If the board has any questions, I'm sure Kevin would be happy to give sort of a brief overview.
They're representing Jansen. Kevin, Gilmore is a self-driven planner, and we also have Michael Reed, the senior management or design engineer for Jansen, who's in charge of this project. So between the three of us, actually between the two of them, we'll be able to explain to you better why these waivers are needed. There's a problem out there now with flooding in a very, a building that should be very, very hygienically cured. And if not, part of this project is to alleviate some of those problems. But with that said, I'll let these guys walk through the waivers, actually let Kevin walk through the waivers, but you can answer.
So essentially, this is part of the biotherapeutic labs project that's been ongoing at the campus. Track. Jansen is essentially leasing a portion of the total building. There's other tenants on the side. Everything inside of the racetrack, if you will-- Okay. Except for Building 11 is owned by Jansen. So this is part of the BTDS Labs project that is ongoing. Building 11 is also part of that BTDS Labs project. And the issue that we have with Building 6 is that the building itself sits approximately six feet below Great Valley Parkway, so it's kind of down in a hole. There's a bank in front of the building that goes down into the front of the building, and the grades right in front of the building are almost dead flat. And what we have occurred or noticed since Jansen has taken possession of the building is we have water getting in the building, like literally getting in the building. There's a mansard roof that's facing, you've probably seen it, facing Great Valley Parkway. Earlier this year with some of the rain events that we've had, there's been literally wind-driven rain that is literally pushing water into the building. Michael and I have been inside the building, and there's water all over the floor. So we are going to be doing drainage improvements in front of the building, adding inlets, things of that nature, regrading the front. However, there really is no room to perform, you know, a basin or things like that, number one. And two, we have geotech study where there is karst in the area. So we were asking for a waiver for that, which the township engineer had looked at. And then we are, we are-- And then we are somewhat constrained in our outlet. We're connecting to an existing inlet that there is very little depth to connect to. So the improvements in the front of the building are really revolving around creating a accessible access that will connect to the other side of the, of Great Valley Parkway to connect the buildings on the other side of the parkway, so that people can move back and forth, pedestrians, but also lab carts. So you'll see that sort of S-curved walkway. That's an accessible walkway that will actually get people down the slope, the six or so feet down the slope and into the building, including the movement of lab carts. There will be a crosswalk that we are currently starting design for. That'll be working with McMahon to actually have that crosswalk across Great Valley. So that's about the basis of the project. Again, the waivers were asked for directly related to some of the pipe sizes that we have that are existing that we're connecting to. And we did do a geotech study. And it would not be favorable for infiltration. In fact, there was zero infiltration. And we would not necessarily have room to do any sort of basin like that. And again, we're trying to keep the water from going into the building that's happening now, and this is gonna be a highly controlled lab space. They're doing oncology-type experiments in here. Is that correct, Michael?
It's a research and development lab for Jansen, so we'll be working on our oncology and immunology drugs there. And it's really important that we maintain certain temperatures and humidities within this lab, so any type of water getting inside is really detrimental to the type of science that we're trying to do. So the basis behind the work.
Sure.
Where will the water be going?
So there is a, wait. There is an existing inlet.
Put your cursor right there.
There is an existing inlet that connects into the existing storm sewer that travels to leave out to Great Valley Parkway that we are connecting to. We are putting a French drain system in front of the building. You'll see the gravel strip put in front of the building. That's really the catch, any of the water that is falling off of that mansard roof. We actually witnessed earlier this year, we believe, a wind-driven rain actually pushing water up onto that mansard roof, it dropping right in front of the building, and then the wind pushing the water up into the building. So we were actually inside puddles all over the exposed floor. And it's not necessarily a groundwater issue. They had putting excavations in there, bone dry, but the floor itself, water all over the floor. So that's, that's what we're doing.
Can I ask, I guess mainly for Al, is if we had another one of those 100-year rainstorms, would anyone downstream from this project really be impacted negatively?
No, not with this area that's in, we're talking about, no.
Okay. No. I think we're, any other questions?
No other questions?
Right. Peter, you wanna make a motion here?
I'd love to. This is exciting to hear Jansen expanding in the corporate center. It's always good news to hear about the corporate center in that respect. Like to make a motion to, sorry, I lost my place here. D, yes. Approval, consider, approve the request for waivers from Stormwater Management Ordinance for the, for ES-17-2023 for 65 Great Valley Parkway, building M6, related to infiltration groundwater recharge and pipe diameter.
Do a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We're good, guys. Thank you.
The next item, E, is approve partial release of finished security related to sanitary sewer improvements by Bacton Investment Partners. Kind of a couple of different motions baked into this one. We've been coordinating with the developer's legal counsel, Bernard Ed, if I can. Can I kick this one over to you?
Sure. Not only the developers' counsel and Matt McKeon, but also Aqua. One of the issues that had come up was, this is sort of fell through the, I believe the land development was done in July 2022. We sold the system in August 2022. And now we are aware that there's an appeal of the Commonwealth Court decision. So we wanted to make sure everything is addressed if the system should come back to us. So this is a, we, the township, are holding $155,000 letter, a letter of credit that has a portion of $155,000 for the sewer. The letter of credit is a little bit more than that. The developer is asking that that $155,000 specifically for the sewer be released. Aqua is then going to have a letter of credit from the developer for $155,000 for the sewer, which will list East Whiteland Township as a second beneficiary on that letter of credit. Also, for what we consider the maintenance bond that are the municipality's planning code, Aqua does something similar. They hold 20%, and they are gonna hold it 20% for 18 months, which is the time period under the NPC. Aqua will be listed, East Whiteland Township will be a second beneficiary of that. Aqua did point out that in our land development agreement, the Bacton developer had not asked for the extension of one year, which is listed in our development agreement, that if you're not done your construction within one year, you should be asking for extension. So he's also asking for a retroactive extension for one year to July 2024. A construction schedule was given to Aqua, I think it was yesterday. They do expect that sewer construction to be completed by the end of October of this year. So I have two motions in front of you for the release and for the extension of time under the land development agreement.
Okay, Donna, could you read that back to us? Are there any, are there any questions? Peter, would you have any, anything?
I do not have any questions.
Rich? Okay. So what I'll do is I'll go ahead and read the motion that's been handed to me, and then you can second it. Action number one is a motion to agree to release $155,000 of the letter of credit held by the township, subject to developer entering into a letter of credit with Aqua in the same amount with the township named as a second beneficiary and subject to a 20% letter credit being held as security for a period of 18 months. Do I have a second?
No, second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Second action. I'd like to make a motion to extend the time period to complete improvements from July 21, 23 through July 21, 24, subject to the developer providing as-built to the township by a registered professional land surveyor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for writing it out. Next would be the zoning, sure, map?
Yeah, just text in this. So this is really what we're looking for with this one, is just the board to authorize a hearing date for a zoning text amendment. This came about, actually, when Lamont Investment Partners had proposed redevelopment of the Clusin-Straubridge property. They requested that that property be included in the multifamily or MF30 Route, MF30 overlay district, which essentially allows apartment buildings along Route 30. At that time, we went through the ordinance and made some modifications to just provide, you know, additional language regarding height versus the number of stories. There's some more language about architectural standards, site plan submissions. I think we added some bells and whistles, I'll say, to the ordinance. Even though that request for a zoning and map amendment has been tabled, it's no longer being considered by the board. Staff are still suggesting that those code, those text amendments that we suggested at that time be considered for inclusion so that they would apply to all of the existing properties, sort of any area of Plainbrook and Route 30, where the previous GMH or Yards at Malvern development took place. We feel that these are all still very beneficial and should be applied to those, any projects that would come about in that part of the township.
If I can just clarify, my understanding is that this by no means changes the zoning of these properties and would not allow additional building of apartments. This is just for landscape design work.
So this would not, there is a, I can pull it up on a map if you'd like, but there's an existing portion of the township where this overlay currently exists. The extents of that current district would not be expanded in any way. These would just be, I'll say, new and improved standards that would apply to all those same properties that currently house within that overlay district. So no new properties would be permitted to construct apartments, but all of the properties that currently have that right under the current ordinance basically would just be required to do more, provide more information, provide enhanced architecture and things like that.
Yeah, so it's more, it's more an amendment designed so that it ends up providing more uniformity and cleaning up what potentially could be built there and how it's built.
Yes.
And the area that's currently zoned with this overlay includes already the Yards at Malvern.
Correct.
Right, that's already. And to the west of that would include, I guess, the U-Haul self-storage?
Yes, I believe it includes pretty much everything, you know, a couple of properties in on Plainbrook, a couple of properties west of Plainbrook. It's all that kind of little node down there.
One of which is the Wawa, which certainly isn't going anywhere, the tire place behind it.
Yes, I believe that's included.
And then the, that flex space where the baseball academy zoning is and the marijuana dispensary.
Yes.
Right, okay. So, and the density, if someone was able to assemble enough of this, how is the density of number of units determined in this district?
The, we did not modify the density
Right.
in any way from the existing, and I'll have to pull it up here. I believe it is, should have known I'd get at least one question, right?
Come on, you had two months to rest, right?
Resting. I would say that's the one thing I did not do while I was out.
I know.
You know what? I just have the text amendment in front of me. I wanna say it's 40, it's 40 units per acre, something in that order magnitude, because it's, you know, these are like essentially four-story buildings. Yeah.
And we don't have anything yet in our ordinance which makes a base density with incentives yet for things like affordable units or that kind of stuff.
Correct. We do not have anything in any of our existing ordinances, and this does not add that to the existing MF30.
Okay.
I do think that's something we will want to discuss. There's an agenda item a little later about our zoning ordinance amendment process.
Right.
And I do think that's gonna be something we wanna talk about, sort of in earnest with.
It's not a bad idea. A lot of townships along the main line are instituting that.
Yeah, it's becoming more, yeah, it's becoming more popular, for sure.
And also just confirm that this can be then tweaked for changes in the future without much difficulty, right?
Yeah, I think this is, admittedly, there's some cleanup stuff that probably should have, I won't say never been written in there, but it clarifies certain things, and some of it's just, I guess, that added bells and whistles. We can also have our consultant from the zoning ordinance process, if approved here, take a look at it and kind of provide some insights as well.
And what's the, there is a minimum lot size, right?
Correct, yeah, between four and six acres. So there are a couple of properties that have said, hey, what do you think? And said, well, you don't meet the minimum acreage, so.
Exactly.
There is some limiting factors. It's, you know, somebody can't just build an apartment on any, you know, little postage stamp.
It's gonna be very hard with these existing uses.
Okay.
Can one owner, could a owner buy two or three different parcels and put it together and then successfully?
Admittedly, I think that was kind of the intent behind some of the things that were outlined in the Route 30 study was to encourage lot assemblage, because one of the challenges we find is that a lot of these, they're small lots, they're shallow lots. Yeah, they're kind of, they kind of are what they are. They're constrained by parking, all kinds of things.
These uses are pretty profitable. Somebody's gonna have to drink a lot of Wawa coffee to justify that property.
Well, after they have a lot of Wawa, then they go down and buy a car, a Fiatza.
Right, later on, that's.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, same. So we'd just be looking, I should have clarified this. The, we're gonna target the November 8th public meeting. That allows us to meet some of our procedural timelines.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize the hearing date of November 8th and advertising for the ordinance amendment related to multifamily Route 30 overlay district, section 200-39.4, and that's a text amendment only.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And passes. Trees, trees, trees.
Trees, trees, trees. This is a request for a letter of support from the, I just realized, I never took down the other stuff. I apologize. From actually the developer, potential developer, future developer of the data center project on Sweetsford Road in the area that was formerly the Malvern Hunt Sewer Lagoons, which are in the process of being remediated. The developer is looking to pursue a grant from the Greenways Trails Recreation Program through DCED, the state, to create sort of a woodland area along, in the areas of the former lagoons, kind of these areas that are highlighted in blue. They discussed during some of their previous proposals to the township, there's a lot of landscaping they'd like to do, provide screening and buffering of their project. What they will be doing in this case is pursuing a grant essentially on our behalf to install about $200,000 worth of landscaping to create sort of what they call afforestation or creating a new woodland where one did not exist previously. They're in consultation with the Tyler, the Temple School of Architecture, landscape architecture to kind of integrate it into one of their graduate programs for the students to actually create a plan that would then be reviewed by the township. We're currently working with them to kind of line up our dates with some of their dates, so you will have an opportunity to comment and approve that plan before it's ultimately installed. But essentially, they'd be looking for this letter of support and consent to do this project on township property.
I finally, after six years on this board, I finally got a developer that heard what I was saying in terms of trees, keeping trees, not removing trees, working around trees, adding trees. This gentleman listened, and I give him credit for doing what he's doing. So I think this is a good project and a good grant, and I'm sure my arborist friend will agree with me.
I think it's gonna look great. It'd be a real nice addition, especially for people coming out of Malvern Hunt.
I'll add like one caveat, too. When we write any letter of support, we'll be sure that it's clear that we have, you know, approval authority and things like that. We'll factor some of those little tidbits into the approval letter or the letter of support, just so it's clear.
So I guess we just need to, what, make a motion for a letter of support? It's not really in an ordinance, but.
Oh, yes.
Is that what you?
A motion to, for Zach, for the township staff to be able to send that letter.
I'll make a motion to support a letter, oh, jeez, to send a letter of support for the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program application by Greenfig Land for the afforestation and landscaping of the former Malvern Hunt Sewer Treatment Plant. for the afforestation and landscaping of the former Malvern Hunt Sewer Treatment Plant Lagoons.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Charles, I know you're out there listening, so you've got your grant approval.
Letter of support.
All right, so this last one here under planning is related to the one that was approved earlier for an extension. This is the redevelopment of a portion of the Great Valley Corporate Center, sort of south of Great Valley Parkway on the west side of Route 29. The previous plan and ordinance that came through the township to do a pretty elaborate mixed-use development there, conference center, hotel, apartments, office. The code was amended a few years back to really downsize that overall development program, further limit the height and a number of things like that. We removed a couple of the permitted uses. What I wanted to just show the board this evening, aside from just kind of providing a little status update, is the overall development program, what's currently being proposed as compared to what was proposed previously. I know it's a little hard to see because it is fairly large chunk of land. Bear with me one second. So on the screen here, this is Great Valley Parkway. This is Route 29, sort of like north to south, right to left, if that makes sense. This is Old Mort Hall Road as it slips around the back of these currently undeveloped properties, kind of like a scrub wooded area. Used to be a farm, so it's been modified over the years, but there is like sort of a wooded area there now. Lap Road is here, sort of on like the south side of the corporate center. Essentially, what they're looking to do is, as part of the master plan, which outlines the phasing for the program, is a, two smaller apartment buildings sort of in the center of the track. These would be age-restricted, 55-plus. About 75 units in each one for 150 total units. On the other side of this road shown here, this is the Lap Road extension, so there'll actually be a constructing extension of the existing Lap Road that would come out and intersect with the intersection of Valley Creek Park, kind of better control that intersection. There will be a larger apartment building of about 250 units. These would be market rate, not restricted in any way. As part of Phase 2, there is, as we, as I understand it from the applicant, from the property owner, it's kind of a placeholder. It's currently shown as a research and development facility and a parking garage there to the, I'll say like to the top of the screen here. As I said, this is understood to be sort of a placeholder, given the state of the office market. There are certain parameters outlined in the zoning ordinance that limits certain uses as a percentage of the overall development, so no matter what they do, they'll have to comply with all of those things. Essentially, what, where this project is, is that it's in master plan. Master plan outlines the phases, which I just kind of went through. It'll outline the traffic improvements applied to each or required by each of those phases to kind of offset any impacts on the surrounding roadways. We will also kind of set the stage for the future phases of land development to make sure that they're doing all the things that are required in the design guidelines, like linear parks and trails along 29 and Great Valley Parkway. So that's all sort of in process right now. The Phase 1 plan has been submitted and is under review. Really what we're looking at here tonight and at probably next month's meeting would be a recommendation or an approval of the master plan here in the coming months. So just wanted to kind of provide the board with an update, see if there's any general comments that you'd like us to kind of factor into the planning process going forward.
Zach, this was, this has been around for ages, hasn't it?
Before me, yes.
And before me and before, I think, everyone here.
Yeah, most of us.
And so this end result is smaller than it was the original project.
Significantly, and the other thing, just kind of to your point, the previous plan proposed to demolish the Fox Barn, the 29 Restaurant and the home next door, that is not the case, and this current plan, that would be retained and integrated into the overall development program.
Thanks for giving that overview on that.
Do we know if there is a user yet for the commercial part of it?
Yes, so as I understand it, I don't want to speak for the property owner. They are in discussions, I guess would probably be the best way to put it, with a potential tenant. Research and development is the phrase that we've heard relative to that. As I understand it, there are some known entities in the township and the region that are, have been interested in potentially occupying that building.
Okay, good. Again, thank you for that.
So the next step is, the next step in this act is we would then approve the master plan and then they go to land development?
Correct.
All right, yeah.
They can submit the first phase of land development, which is just a much more, like higher level of detail. So the thought was, to the extent that we can run them kind of concurrently, but the master plan will likely come with a number of conditions that.
Sure.
They would implement in each phase, but also very specifically outline traffic improvements and things like that. So try to tee it up as best we can during master.
Yeah, got it, okay.
Have you heard any update as far as time, timeframe going forward with master plan submission?
So for this?
Yeah.
So this master plan is under review. We've issued two reviews now on it. They'll be looking for a planning commission recommendation this coming month, I would say this month, and then they'll be back before you in October and in theory November. It's usually like that two-part process that we, we have. Really just wanted, given the size of it, given the number of, the evolution of this over the years, just wanted to get sort of a sneak peek.
Okay, thanks. Okay, John, before I hit you up, I just want to give an update at the beginning of the meeting. I talked about the pothole underneath the 352 underpass, and Chief Jaeger had an officer drive over there to take a look at that in that period of time. Thank you, chief. And he indicates that the hole is filled at this point in time, so someone got to it, so we don't have a hole. Thanks for checking on that. I thought you were going to say one of your guys, you know, got a little asphalt and threw some in and took care of it.
No, it's just, that's such a bad spot for a pothole.
Isn't it?
Because then they go to avoid it and then they hit mirrors or crash and it's, it's an ongoing problem.
Yeah, it is.
And so we try to jump on it as soon as we can.
All right, thanks. Okay, then we'll move into John Mate and zoning. I know that I've been keeping you busy this week with our folks over in Brennerran, but I'll let you give you a report, update.
All right, for the month of September, there will be no zoning hearing board. There's no pending applications at this time that need to be heard. Under enforcement, enforcement action updates, the Pioneer gas station had started some work, had a machine break and work ceased. With that and no additional work had been done to address the problems we had there with property maintenance issues, excuse me, issues, a citation for non-compliance of property maintenance code is in process. And as Chairman just mentioned, proactive enforcement is continuing in the Brennerran neighborhood. A month ago, we sent out a, basically a warning notice to all the residents for issues that we had that were coming up. And this week, we started a systematic go-through of the neighborhood, street by street, addressing the problems, not only with warnings, but giving violation notices for other things that we came up, sort of as a friendly reminder. And we'll keep progressing on those in the coming days and weeks to hopefully make a little difference in the neighborhood over there.
Yeah, thanks, John, for jumping on that fast. Next is public comment.
We have one public comment here online. Barb, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Donna. It's a little bit more of a public question. Scott, I just wanted to ask, at the beginning, when you talked about the Bishop Tube update, you said something about, I don't know, was it retention pot or something along those lines? And I just wondered if you could just briefly repeat what you said, because I didn't understand.
Okay, Barb, I'll get back to my notes here, give me one second. But essentially, what, what I heard from residents and what I saw from the DEP meeting is that the presentation by DEP brought to light potentially another issue with that area. Again, we've, we've got an ordinance that has 18 conditions on it, but again, this is a potentially another, another issue that could impact the project. And that is being a potential bio-retention area that has to be put on the site around Little Valley Creek. Depending on what their remediation analysis does, will determine, A, if it's necessary and B, how large. And if it is going to be substantially larger than maybe anticipated, it could have an impact on the, the design area that's available for any usage. So I hope that clarifies?
Yes, thank you so much. I appreciate that. I'm sorry if I found myself at the beginning of a long stop road. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay. And moving on at 3 minutes to 8.
Yeah, about that.
Scott, do you mind, I want to make one comment now about the escaped convict or whatever, you know, whatever that is. So I just want to emphasize how important the cameras were that everybody had, and it's an ongoing, I've had cameras at my house for years and I just keep adding more because they're invaluable, you know, for watching pets or whatever you want. But in this case, it really is like for cameras now, they're so cheap, and I think it's just a good idea for people to look into cameras or alarms or something, but it's, just doesn't make sense to have nothing in this day and age. So I'm just trying to emphasize with all the work that it saves police officers and in this case, put them without some of those cameras, they would have just been unconfirmed sightings and things wouldn't have proceeded the way that they did. So I just can't emphasize enough the cheapness of cameras, how nice they are to have as a luxury item for a cheap price and how much they save. And from the police department, you can tell us that you have cameras or you don't, and then that way, if there is a crime somewhere nearby, we could come to you and ask you for, for your film, and you don't have to give it to us, but we would be able to look at it and find out whether this car was there or something along those lines. Just wanted to make sure people were aware of that as well as, you know, relate it to this incident that happened this week.
Okay, good advice. Moving on to the consent agenda, I will read in its entirety and then stop me if there's any questions. 10A, approve the meeting minutes from August 9, 2023. Ratify the payment of bills for August of 2023 in the amount of $634,570.96. Accept the treasurer's report as of July 31, 2023. Approve the 2024 minimum municipal obligations, the MMO for township pension plans, in the amount of $1,317,225. Combined totals include police, fire, and non-uniform.
And on that, I just have a quick question. The, it's the 2024, that means it must be deposited into the respective accounts by the end of 2024 or by the end of 2023?
I'm sorry, Rich. Looking at a. I'm sorry, Rich, I was looking at a report, so what's, what's, can you repeat the question?
The minimum municipal obligation for 2024.
It's, it's not me, it's.
It's Usha.
Yes.
Yeah. By the end of 2023. Get somewhere 2023.
Okay, so that, okay, got it.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sorry, I wasn't able to pick up, it was 20?
2023.
2023.
Yes.
By the end of this year, that.
That needs to be funded. Got it. Okay, thanks, Usha.
Thank you.
Moving on to E. Approve payment to innovative construction for the 2023 road paving project in the amount F, approve the Backton Hill Park, the Mecca construction payment request revised downwards Ratify the contract with the Chester County for Vision Partnership Program grant for zoning ordinance update, funding in the amount of $50,000 from the county. Accept proposal and scope of work from Berman Collars for zoning ordinance update for price not to exceed $115,000, funded in part by the county. And I'm not sure what exactly changed to accept proposal instead of executive contract. I'm sure that's just administrative. Right? Sure. An arrow proposal for $24,750 for ADA improvements at Valley Creek Park. And finally, J, approve board of supervisors and their dependents optional participation in non-uniform, non-union health and insurance plans. Can I hear a motion, please?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other comments? Not, we adjourned at 8:04.